We are now at our first briefing of the Capital Program Phase Two for the years 2025 through 2030. Dr. Swift.
Thank you, Madam President and trustees and members of the community. It was in December of 2020, trustees, I believe we were actually on virtual at that time, that you last approved a major phase in our 2019 bond project. I remember that we were with the trustees for three sessions during that December, a study session, a first briefing, and a second briefing. Tonight, we are bringing, for your consideration in first briefing, the 2019 Bond and Stinking Fund together, our capital program, and we're bringing forward the Phase Two of this plan. Trustees, back in 2019, and I just want to give a shout out to members of this board. It was your vote. Several of you were on the board at that time, back in early 2019, when we decided to move forward with this bond program. You remember, our infrastructure realities were quite brutal at that time. I always use the example of, I would watch closely the weather, because any time we had a strong rain, I knew that there would be many leaks across the district. Our infrastructure realities were the result of deferred and delayed upkeep and updating of physical properties. That was a natural outcome of a decade of underfunding the public schools, and Michigan being one of only two or three states in the country that does not fund for capital program. So that responsibility is either on the community, and thankfully, our community supported. We went through two years of documentation in a facilities condition assessment. Engineers were inside of, on top of, and around underneath every building in the district, and we have documented an entire book on each building in the district and all of the FCA needs. That was part of the foundation, trustees, for the choice of this particular level of bond that we brought to our community in 2019, and it was passed. We noted in detail each building and the repairs that would be needed over time. In addition to that facilities condition index, we also had heard the number one request was around providing climate control, air conditioning, for our 17, 18 buildings that had very little or no air conditioning. I'm very grateful to this board and to our voters who supported that bond in 2019, and it's because of that that we've been able to carry forward the Phase One plan. You'll hear more about that in just a moment. But Phase One, years 2020 through 2024. And now tonight, we'll be looking at Phase Two, roughly 2025 to 2030. I want to thank the bond trustees. If you don't remember exactly, that's Baskett, Johnson, and trustee Lazarus chairs the bond committee. This is a hard-working committee. They have met weekly for years, it feels like, and it is, to attend to all of the preparation, both in Phase One and in Phase Two. This bond represents a generational impact to our school district and to our community, a generational impact. And we use this slide often when we think about the difference that this infrastructure bond will make for our community, for our students, for our staff. And we use the quote, it's there, "The planting of trees under whose shade we do not expect to sit." And so that is the idea behind what you'll see tonight. And in fact, for some individuals, some of the dates are so far away, it's hard sometimes to relate to it. But we are sitting here today as recipients of 34 beautiful buildings, many of them with attached outdoor wooded areas and trails. Those are all our community buildings, because prior boards and prior generations in Ann Arbor thought forward, thought ahead, to provide these for our community. So I just want to thank you for your forward thinking, your innovation, and we do, through this implementation of this bond, we pay it forward. The whole centerpiece of the bond is the student learning experience. And as trustee Gainer noted a moment ago, that the teacher and the staff that delivers education is first, but right behind that is the setting, the place, the classroom, the equipment in which that activity occurs. So here we are, and we're ready to hear about how we're going to transform our learning environments. You know these folks, trustees, beginning with Bernard Rice, Assistant Superintendent, Capital Program and Facilities and other things.
Thank you, Dr. Swift.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and Board of Trustees, and the Ann Arbor community. First, I'd like to introduce my team. I have Jason Bean, he's Director of Capital Improvement. Stephanie Corona, she's our Project Manager. Kevin Stansbury is our designer. It is our pleasure to present to you this evening the Capital Program Phase Two program from 2025 to 2030. In 2019, we had a vision. The board had a vision, a bond vision, and this vision tells a real story. It begins with the transformation of students to have a quality and equitable learning experience, while they're in their neighborhood schools with a goal of providing health, safety, and well-being for students. This begins with all students feeling like they belong. In preparing for the future, we set capital goals. There were four pillars. Trustees, you have seen those slides before, probably many a times. Teaching and learning, safe and health and well-being, sustainable and environmental infrastructure, efficient and effective support systems and services. All of these lay the groundwork in which we will build on. And the next few slides you're going to see from the old campaign, this is the campaign and ballot language. Some of the major takeaways from this was, well, a billion dollars.
A billion dollars.
Upgrades facilities and sites, enhance building security, and provide upgraded and sustainable learning environments throughout the district. To achieve these goals, we have the power of combining Stinking Fund and bond, together for a single-source funding for the next 20 years. $1.4 billion is needed to achieve our goals. With this facility condition assessment, recommendation, and other improvements, this team presents how we can get there. This is a funding overview from the Capital Program. The original campaign budget was $1,441,780,000. Did you get that number? A very important number. Our current projected budget is $1,441,506,623. With this projection amount, we'll be under budget by $273,000, under budget. This is being physically financial with the taxpayers' money. Ann Arbor Public Schools has approved $1.4 billion for the next 20 years to be invested in what's best for kids, for schools, and the future of Ann Arbor Public Schools. Albert Einstein said it best, "Your imagination is everything." It is the preview of life's coming to traction. Here in Ann Arbor Public School District, we have imagined what our educational institute should look like, what it's going to look like for generations. It is our job as educational leaders to look into the future, to see our organization, not as it is, but what it could be. We'd like to say thank you, first to the Ann Arbor community. Your major support of this bond, without you, this board, Dr. Swift, none of these things that you're going to see can come true. So we thank you. And with that, I turn it over to Mr. Bean.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you, Dr. Swift. Good evening, trustees. So the Capital Programs team has been working hard over the last several years on our bond plan implementation, and we continue to apply several key principles or values established early on to keep our work grounded in a student-centered approach. So one very key principle that we keep coming back to is that the built environment can directly impact our learners. As you are aware, children are not little adults. Their body chemistry is different, how they experience and respond to their environments are different. And by the time a student graduates from high school, they will have spent more time in a school than any other environment outside of their home. So we utilize a growing body of research curated in large part by the Harvard School of Public Health that demonstrates connections between healthy, high-performance schools and student academic performance. And this research identifies connections between healthy buildings and improved student health. Healthier students have been found to demonstrate increased cognitive function, which in turn is linked with improved student outcomes. And the research we often reference is focused on how students hear, breathe, see, feel, and how that impacts how they think and learn. So when we talk about how they hear, it's the acoustic quality of the environments we create. When we talk about how they breathe, it's the indoor air quality, the enhanced ventilation improvement. When we think about how they see, it's providing access to daylight and appropriate levels of artificial light to support visual acuity. When we think about how they feel, it's temperature, humidity, the comfort of their spaces, and all of those factors impact how they think and ultimately learn. And not only does the pursuit of our student-centric approach through healthy, high-performance environments influence our work, but we stay grounded through additional principles and values established through the Listen and Learn Tour and the conclusions for the 2019 bond recommendations, such as maintaining neighborhood schools, using facts and data to inform current and future work, regular updates. The Ann Arbor Public Schools community values a quality education for every child, and we have received beautiful schools and properties from previous generations that are now outdated. And now it is our responsibility as good stewards to prepare for future generations in the AAPS. And so this evening, our team will present to you the current and upcoming efforts in implementation of Phase One of the Capital Programs Plan, a recommendation and focus on neighborhood elementary schools for Phase Two, which will be explained in detail later in the presentation, our outlook for a Phase Three to maintain high-performance schools, and a recommendation for continued strategic implementation of capital needs improvements on an ongoing basis for our middle schools and high schools and all buildings as needed throughout each phase of the Capital Programs Plan. On the whole, this represents a collective phasing plan to successfully keep our promises to the community while staying on budget, on time, and holding tight to our vision. And with that, I will pass to Stephanie Corona. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. I'd like to focus on Phase One, and the board did approve a couple of years ago the request to proceed with the first years, one through six, which was our early work. Most of that early work was a focus on really the facility condition assessment and stabilizing our buildings. Okay, we had a focus on, our early assessment work really allowed us to do a couple of things. A, review the facility condition assessment, look at the life cycle analysis of our buildings, and also hit some of those early, much-needed stabilization of our buildings. Some of those stabilizations included, thank you, air conditioning and lighting, LED lighting. Our number-one thing we heard was how our buildings felt, the high heat that was occurring in our fall and spring times of the year, making sure that we had good air quality. And so we did start with our air conditioning and lighting projects. Several of them have been completed already. We have several that are currently in mid-process, and we have several that are going to be starting this summer and also 2024. So by the end of 2024, we should be completed with our air conditioning and lighting projects. We also had a focus on some very, some infrastructure items, like our theater rigging, which was beyond their useful life. So we needed to address those. Paving throughout the district, some of you may have hit some potholes. We addressed some of those items. Roofing, that's, Dr. Swift brought it up earlier, but we really needed to take care of our roof leaks and stabilize our buildings by reducing any of the weather coming in from the outside. And when we did that, we also looked at adding our solar projects. And our solar projects really helped have us start to address our sustainability initiatives, but also help with, starting to help with our operating costs to offset the air conditioning that we added to the buildings. We also had some significant playground projects. But in addition to that, we also had, with going with the stabilization, a lot of masonry restoration, a lot of building envelope repair that had to occur in stabilization. We also looked at a lot of boiler and heating systems and improved those. Our elevator modernizations that are starting to happen throughout the district. Again, our elevators are starting to come up on the end of their useful life. And then also focusing on music, art, and science furniture and equipment. Those are items that did not get refreshed in the last go-around. So those were much-needed refreshers that we're addressing now. We also looked at making sure that we were looking at safe drinking water. We also provided some social and emotional spaces that were needed in some of our schools. And we also are looking at some door replacement throughout the district. So what did we learn during this first phase so far? Well, some of our lessons learned was the logistical challenges when working in occupied buildings. We knew that was going to happen, but it really gave us a lot of insight of how do we move forward into the next phase. We also had to look at creating a plan to address labor and supply chain challenges, flat-out, not going away. This is going to be here to stay. So we need to readdress how we approach Phase Two. COVID definitely showed us the fact that we need to be prepared and have resiliency in our schools. We needed to also limit the reliance of external factors, and we also needed to budget accordingly for the anticipated increases due to all the things we just talked about above. Robust communication and engagement. We really wanted to build in more time in that communication and engagement before we start any kind of drawing or planning of a building. And then also realigning our short-term and long-term objectives. But more importantly, the decisions that are being, or the recommendations that are being made are really based on data-driven decisions. Enrollment pressures, facility condition assessment. Those all come into play when making our recommendations. So those lessons learned carried into Phase Two, and Kevin is going to talk to us about Phase Two.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Swift. The lessons learned Stephanie just shared were from Phase One, but there are other lessons learned we've been tracking as well. They're more at the planning level. We have added clarity to our focus on neighborhood elementary schools. The focus isn't new, it's been there all along. We're just highlighting it in this plan. We'll hear more about why neighborhood elementaries are critical drivers in a moment. We've also found that we can reduce our reliance on staging. And in doing so, we developed a much more flexible plan. Reducing staging also reduces the logistics of temporarily moving whole schools to another location. The current plan stages 10 schools. That's down quite a bit from the original plan. The reduction comes from two refinements. We found that we can construct new buildings next to existing ones on some sites. And for middle schools and high schools with a focus on FCA scope, facilities condition assessment scope, sorry, we found that we can do the work to meet our goals without staging. For project types, we've defined two main project types to replace the generic major project term previously used. As we will see, these project types are primarily associated with neighborhood elementaries where the need is the greatest. We have shown planning timeframes in our plan tonight to more accurately reflect project duration. A critical aspect within these timeframes that we will highlight is the project engagement process. Our assumptions about property acquisitions have also been recalibrated. Property acquisitions are highly dynamic, and our plan has to be very flexible. Of course, we've been tracking and implementing other considerations. For instance, adherence to the facility condition assessment priorities. And all along, we've been trying to ease enrollment pressures, primarily at the elementary level, and maintaining our bond goals, which we've reviewed tonight. So why neighborhood elementary schools? Well, enrollment pressures are focused at the elementary level. Our middle school and high schools don't have the same pressures. The average age of an elementary school in the district is 70 years. And extensive capital needs have been identified in the facilities condition assessment for the elementaries. As Jason mentioned earlier, the biggest impact can be made by focusing on the youngest learners. And improvements to the learning environments is a proven way to accomplish the greatest impact for youngest learners. It's also true that the elementaries in the district are the 11 highest facility condition-ranked schools. And among, and there are 16 of the highest 22. So the elementaries are the highest level. As a group, the middle schools and high schools are constructed better, have adequate capacity for enrollments, and are not as highly ranked in the facility condition assessment. So regarding project types, we will share two main types tonight, which replaced the generic major projects descriptor in the previous version of this plan. Additions and renovations is the first type. We call it major modernizations in the plan. And these are retaining the existing buildings and improving them. You'll see a list here of the schools that we are recommending we do major modernizations to. The green schools are schools that do not require staging, and we're going to look a little bit more at the staging issue in a second. The blue schools are historic schools. Slosen is also historic, but we couldn't make it green and blue. We recommend that all of the historic schools be added to and renovated rather than replaced. These are the district school buildings that, when originally constructed, were constructed to last forever. Though major modernization is a great approach for many projects, sometimes tear-downs and reconstructions are the most cost-effective solution. Putting a lot of dollars into buildings that were originally constructed to last not much longer than they have already feels like it would be putting good money after bad. So we recommend new construction for most elementaries that were built in the '60s and '70s, based mainly on the fact that they're at the end of their life expectancy. Again, schools in green here are schools that don't require staging. You will notice that there aren't any blue schools on this list. We don't recommend tearing down and rebuilding any of the district's historic buildings. We can meet our goals there with additions and renovations. A lot of folks wonder what a staging school is. Staging is a term we use to describe when an entire school community moves to a different building so that construction can take place at their school. The staging school is the school they move to. So in this example, we would build a new Wines, and the current Wines or old Wines would become a staging school. So anywhere staging is indicated in the plan we're going to present tonight, work will require that students be elsewhere during construction. Fortunately, there are several sites which can accommodate new school construction adjacent to an existing one, avoiding the need to stage altogether there. And I want to remind trustees that meeting our goals with reduced staging is a win. This is a list of the schools that do not require staging. There are four here, Mitchell, Logan, Lawton, and Wines, that would also generate a staging school opportunity for us. So the construction of new Mitchell will mean that old Mitchell can become a staging location. And that's also true for Logan, Lawton, and Wines. There is another project type that we are tracking. It doesn't appear in the plan because it's ongoing. It's ongoing capital improvements, which are typically shorter in duration, and they focus on FCA assessment priorities. They don't require staging. They are typically at our high schools, other than pathways, and at our middle schools, other than Slosen, and at our other buildings. Among other efforts driven by the facility condition assessment, work in this category will factor in capital improvements needs of athletics, project lead-the-way, music, art, science, et cetera, at the high schools and middle schools. Another goal we've been tracking since the inception of the bond is matriculation, or how students will be impacted by this work over their careers in the district. By focusing on neighborhood elementaries with new construction and major modernization and implementing ongoing capital improvements at the high schools and middle schools, we've done our best to ensure that a student attending an elementary school, while it's under construction, will not experience a similar disruption thereafter. One last detail before we review the plan. This is a typical engagement process. It begins with board's approval of this plan. And then for any project that we implement, a professional team begins to define the program, meeting with the school team, which is school leadership, school staff, students, some district leaders, to refine the plan and receive feedback. Then the school community is involved. The school community involves the school team, plus parents, community partners, the broader community, et cetera. All of that engagement is then wrapped up with a recommendation to the board for a schematic design. That takes one year. This is the second part of a four-part, two-and-a-half-year planning process. So after this one year, assuming the board approves the schematic design, architects spend another year on design and documentation. Then there's bidding, and then construction can begin, which is typically two years. We'll see in a second how this one year of planned engagements fits into the overall two-and-a-half-year planning window. Okay. We felt those few clarifications would be important for you to appreciate the plan that we're going to present tonight. I know you can't read this. You're not intended to be able to read this. We're going to be showing you enlargements of this by year and a minute that you can read. But pausing here for a second to appreciate the whole plan is important. We can talk about a few things on this. This is a chronological plan. I think the previous version that these trustees saw was a staging-centric version that showed a school and all the schools that would stage there. We have that plan as an appendix here, which we can look at if folks are more comfortable with that. But we felt that appreciating the overall plan was easier in the chronological version. It's important to note that the staging methodology is unchanged in this plan. Schools required to stage go to a nearby staging location in an order that closely follows the FCA ratings. The staging schools themselves are specifically planned to become available following a similar methodology, permitting all projects to follow the FCA ranking as closely as possible. Trustees, we're showing the most of Trustees, we're showing the most efficient staging assignments we can come up with in this presentation. Another idea that's easiest to see here in the overall plan is about capacity. The pink planning blocks that you see here, which we'll look at in detail in a second, and the blue and green construction blocks provide a clear indication of the scaling up of design professionals and trade contractors that this capital program requires. Having a plan laid out this way allows us to keep ahead. I'll remind the... or, I'm sorry, I'll note for the trustees that our design professionals and trade contractors have the capacity to do this work. Couple more things about this before we move on. You'll see that there are three main columns, white columns, beige columns, and gray columns. The white columns are Phase One. We have taken away the early work graphics here. We're just focusing on the major projects. The beige columns are Phase Two, and you'll see that all of the buildings here are touched one way or another in Phase Two. The gray columns are Phase Three. As a reminder, ongoing capital improvements are not shown here. When we can, we're going to concentrate that work during years where fewer construction So now we're going to show you this program by year, focusing on construction starts. This is the first one. It is for Pathways and Mitchell, New Mitchell. Couple things about reading this graphic. Each year has, excuse me, three cells in it. One cell is for winter semester, the middle cell is for summer, and the last cell is for fall semester. So the plan in all of its years is derived around the cycle of a school year. Some of the schools, like in this case, Pathways, have a number following their name. That is a facility condition ranking. Just want to remind the trustees that the lower the number, the higher the ranking. New Mitchell, in this case, doesn't have a number because it is an all-new school. It has not gotten a facility condition assessment. One thing about the planning timeframes on this slide is that they're not typical. The global pandemic created a little pause for us for Mitchell and Pathways, so the planning process is elongated. But in the next couple of slides, we'll see a typical one. These are 2025 construction starts, and we're seeing here for the first time the typical two-and-a-half-year planning window. The first full calendar year, so in this example, 2023, is the engagement process we reviewed earlier. The three months before that, so the fall semester of 2022, is preparation at the capital programs level for hiring architects and developing a basic program. In this example, the full year of 2024 is architects continuing the design and drawing and the documentation. And then in early 2025, the project is bid, and the trustees are asked to approve trade contracts. So that's the two-and-a-half-year planning window. And then various construction types, new construction for Dickens, Logan, and Thurston, and in this case, for Slosson, it's a major modernization. Just want to point out here that with Slosson's construction window so early in the overall plan, it will have little, if any, effect on students who attend Baugh, Dickens, Eberwhite, or Lawton, its feeder schools. So we're watching out for a major project at a middle school to alleviate matriculation issues. And by having it early, that solves the problem. Another thing I want to point out before we move on, none of these schools stages. But New Logan will give us an opportunity to use Old Logan to stage later. Okay. 2026 construction starts. None of these schools stages either. A year like this one, which might be a little lighter, we might focus our ongoing capital improvements projects here if we can. You will have noticed a pattern so far, which is that we are focusing first on the highest-ranked schools that don't require staging, while also creating staging school opportunities to accommodate the highest-ranked schools that do require staging. So so far, we have yetus to require a school to stage in these first three years. We're showing a new middle school auditorium in this plan. We're going to delve a little bit more into that later in the presentation. So here we see our first staging schools. We're showing Old Mitchell and Old Logan beginning to stage schools in the highest order of the FCA that they fall within their zone. New Wines will make Old Wines available for staging later as well. New Wines would be our... Old Wines, I apologize, would be our last staging school. This is 2028 construction starts, showing Old Lawton being used as a staging school. This is also a fairly light year for our construction starts. So we would focus our ongoing capital improvements projects in this year if we can. Many of those will be as needed, so we won't always be able to schedule when those occur. But those that we can schedule, we're going to try to schedule in lighter years. 2029 construction starts. Here we're showing Old Wines being used to stage. And also at the bottom here, Old Logan would be converted into a preschool for the north side of town using a major modernization approach. A fairly light year in 2030. We're doing one new construction project at Abbott. A year like this would be ideal to schedule ongoing capital improvements projects if we can. Okay, these projects are Phase Three projects. Construction would be in Phase Three. But we need to start the planning in Phase Two for these five. Again, the beige columns are Phase Two. Okay, so the need for a new middle school auditorium will end my portion of the presentation. We're first going to establish what its main purpose would be, and its likely accommodations. Then we'll look at, for lack of a better term, shortcomings of the existing pool facilities and some benefits of a new auditorium. So a new state-of-the-art pool auditorium would allow for adding much-needed instructional spaces at our middle schools without increasing building size. Just as a reminder, the existing pools are far beyond their useful life. We're going to look at some numbers in the next slide that will talk about that. The new auditorium will be an indoor swimming facility dedicated to instruction, student enrichment, and athletics. It'll be on the order of 15,000 to 20,000 square feet. Hasn't been designed yet, but this is typically what a middle school auditorium would be, with competition swim lanes, locker rooms, and other support spaces to accommodate swimming and instruction, competition, and related instructional and enrichment functions. We're thinking that it'll be used by fifth graders and potentially younger learners as well as middle schoolers. Okay. Insofar as the existing middle school LAP pools go, their average age is 54 years. You can see here, Tappens is 72. So another thing about them is that the facility condition assessment lists them as poor and fair condition. And as classroom spaces in our middle schools, which they are, they are by far the least utilized, while their maintenance costs and operating costs are the highest. Regarding the benefits of a new competition auditorium facility, we talked a little bit earlier about much-needed space at middle schools for critical programming enhancements. And those could include steam or maker spaces, music spaces, student services and support spaces, career and technical educational environments, and other things. To determine how those spaces could be used, there will be an engagement process at each school. The school will have a voice, of course, in how those spaces are used. These are just examples of things we believe middle schools will be able to use, which they don't currently have efficiently. But the new competition auditorium facility will also enable middle school swim meets, which we can't do in the existing LAP pools. And they'll provide additional programming and enrichment for other district stakeholders. They're also going to reduce district-wide operating costs for pools, going from five pools to one. The math is pretty simple. It's about an 80% reduction. And using new technologies for pools and their ventilation systems, we'll be able to create a healthy environment for our students. That brings us to a summary and recommendation. And I would say, I'll speak for the group, we're requesting approval of the Phase Two capital program.
Dr. Swift?
Thank you, President Lazarus. I need to offer one clarification for those swimmers who may be listening. The middle schools do not have a swimming elective. I think some of us are aware, but I just need to clarify. It is a unit in the PE course. So that is why I'm referring to a shorter time period. The second piece is, yes, competitive swim, synchronized swim, after-school activities, and those would be very well-served in a location like a competitive mat. Thank you.
Well, you've given us a lot to think about. I'm sure we'll hear from the community, and we'll be sending some questions your way, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the work.